This meeting is called to order in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. This meeting was included in a list of meeting dates sent to the Home News Tribune, the Star Ledger, and the Highland Park Planet on January 4th, 2017, and was posted on the bulletin board of Borough Hall, 221 South Fifth Avenue on January 4th, 2017, and has been remained and has remained continuously posted as required by law. Fire exits are to my left and to my right. If you come up to speak, please speak into the microphones and assistive listening devices are available. Rabbi, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the rule of legal witness and facts, my nation, my God, and to the people with liberty and justice
Roll call, please. Mayor Bill Mittler?
Here.
Councilman Fine?
Here.
Councilwoman Foster-Dublin?
Here.
Councilman George?
Here.
Councilman Hirsch?
Here.
Councilwoman Kim?
Here.
Councilwoman Wolkowitz?
Here.
For Attorney?
Here.
Or Administrator? Okay. We're about to enter into the semi-annual report in honor of our public safety team. Chief Frisco, would you like to come up, please?
Thank you. Just walk in.
Yes.
Good evening, everyone. And thank you for all coming out tonight. What a nice crowd. As the mayor mentioned, this is one of two meetings per year where the mayor and council take the time to honor our first responders for extraordinary actions. Having said that, every day, the First Aid Squad, the fire department, the police officers answer many, many calls and do wonderful work. Tonight is just a little sampling of some of the extraordinary actions that have brought to our attention, but I can tell you Highland Park is very lucky to have these individuals out there to protect you and to take care of you. So we thank all of our first responders for everything they do every day. We have many members in attendance. Wonderful to see everyone. We have Chief Jerry McElair from the Middlesex County Prosecutor's Office, Chief Investigation, and many, many members of his staff. We thank you for coming out because tonight we're going to honor someone from the Prosecutor's Office also. However, before we do that, I think we have three things we're going to do tonight. We're going to start with promotions. Now, promotions in the Highland Park Police Department's a big deal because we're a small department and it doesn't happen very often, so we're very happy that we're able to do that. After an extensive review of the individual's files, their service files, and interview process, we have selected three people to be promoted. I'm going to call them up individually, and the mayor will come forward with our public safety chairperson, Elsie Foster-Dublin. She will administer the oath, however, I'll tell you a little something about the individual first. So first, we're going to call up Sergeant Rick Abrams, who is being promoted to Lieutenant this evening. Sergeant Abrams being promoted to Lieutenant tonight, as I said. He was hired from the alternate route program at the Monmouth County Police Academy in June of 2003. What that means is he put himself through the police academy at his own expense, and we were fortunate enough to pick him up and hire him, and here he is today. So, very good. He graduated from Brookdale Community College in 1997 with an associate's degree in science. He was assigned to the patrol division after completing field training. Along with working in a patrol division, he advanced his training, and he became a firearms instructor for the department, a position he's held for over 13 years now and which he has great interest in. He has been a member of the Middlesex County Special Operations Response Team, known as SOAR, for 13 years. He also has been a tactical firearms instructor and TASER instructor at the county level. He was promoted to Sergeant in August 2012. Holding the Bible will be his wife Erica and son Lucas. Will they please come up? Mayor, you will administer the oath?
Yes, I will. Thank you. Please repeat after me. I, Richard Abrams...
I, Richard Abrams.
...do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
...that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly...
Faithfully.
...perform all of the duties...
Perform all of the duties.
...of the office of Lieutenant...
Of the office of Lieutenant.
...according to the best of my ability...
According to the best of my ability.
I do further solemnly swear...
I do further solemnly swear.
...that I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
...and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey...
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
...and that I will bear true faith and allegiance...
And I will bear true faith and allegiance.
...to the same...
To the same.
...and to the governments established...
And to the governments established.
...in the United States...
In the United States.
...and this state...
And this state.
...under the authority of the people...
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God. We now have a shiny new badge to be presented by Elsie Foster-Dublin. Congratulations, Rick.
I just want to say thank you for the opportunity. I'm looking forward to this new chapter in my career of serving the people of Highland Park and the members of our department. Thank you very much.
Officer Satchow is being promoted to Sergeant tonight. I understand he's had these shirts for quite a while in his closet. Ten years. He finally got to use them. Congratulations. Officer John Satchow is being promoted to Sergeant. As I said, he graduated from the Monmouth County Police Academy in 2000. After graduating, he worked as a Class II officer for Manasquan Borough. Then he was hired by the Department of Defense Police Department, and from there, he was hired by the D.O.L. Police Department. In July of 2007, he was hired by Highland Park. We were fortunate enough to pick him up, and he started his career in a patrol division and eventually moved into the detective bureau, where he attended specialized training, became a certified arson investigator, is also a grant writer for the police department. After five years in the detective bureau, he returned to the patrol division, where he's currently a certified field training officer and a police motorcycle officer. Holding the Bible will be his wife, Joanne, and her two sons, Michael and Nicholas.
Repeat after me. I, John Satchow...
I, John Satchow.
...do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
...that I will faithfully...
Faithfully.
...impartially...
Impartially.
...and justly...
And justly.
...perform all the duties...
Perform all the duties.
...of the office of Sergeant...
The office of Sergeant.
...according to the best of my ability...
According to the best of my ability.
I do further solemnly swear...
I do further solemnly swear.
...that I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
...and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey...
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
...and that I will bear true faith...
And I will bear true faith.
...and allegiance...
And allegiance.
...to the same...
To the same.
...and to the governments...
And to the governments.
...established in the United States...
Established in the United States.
...and this state...
And this state.
...under the authority of the people...
Under the authority of the people.
Congratulations.
Did he say anything, Joe? He'll be presented with his new badge. Okay, last but not least, Jose Joe Corbello, please come up. Officer Joe Corbello is being promoted to Sergeant tonight. He graduated from the Mercer County Police Academy in 2003. From 2003 to 2006, he worked as a police officer for the Human Services Police Department. In April 2006, he joined the Highland Park Police Department. Officer Corbello started his career in a patrol division and then served in our traffic division. While in that position, he completed special training in accident reconstruction and addressed traffic complaints and traffic needs throughout the borough. He's a certified field training officer and currently holds a position of youth officer, where he works with the faculty and students of all the Highland Park schools. He is also a lead instructor, which stands for law enforcement against drugs, and organizes and teaches the Junior Cadet Police Academy, which is a week-long program for children to learn about police officers and their duties and responsibilities. I believe we're in that week now, during day two of the youth academy. He is married to his wife Diana. They have four children, Joseph, Summer... Dominic. ...and Paige. And holding the family's Bible will be his son, Joseph, and his daughter, Paige. Joseph and Paige, please come up.
Repeat after me. I, Jose Corbello...
I, Jose Corbello.
...do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
...that I will faithfully...
That I will faithfully.
...impartially...
Impartially.
...and justly...
And justly.
...perform all the duties...
Perform all the duties.
...of the office of Sergeant...
Of the office of Sergeant.
...according to the best of my ability...
According to the best of my ability.
I do further solemnly swear...
I do further solemnly swear.
...that I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
...and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey...
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
...and that I will bear true faith...
And that I will bear true faith.
...and allegiance...
And allegiance.
...to the same...
To the same.
...and to the governments...
And to the governments.
...established in the United States...
Established in the United States.
...and in this state...
And in this state.
...under the authority of the people...
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God. Thank you very much. That's it for the promotions. Congratulations to all those who were promoted. Thank everyone who participated and wish everyone the best of luck. The next order of business is we're going to give out a proclamation. We're going to give it to two different agencies. So I'm going to call up Detective Sean McGraw, Detective Ally Bitterman from the Middlesex County Prosecutor's Office. Please come up. I'm sure everyone in the town was shaken by a horrific crime that occurred back in February. I'm going to, for those of you who may not know, I'm just going to give a synopsis of what occurred. On February 19th, 2017, the Highland Park Police Department received a 911 call from a resident on Harper Street reporting on a female who was holding a baby and was screaming for help. Officers quickly arrived on scene and began treating the victim, who was suffering from multiple abrasions and trauma. Responding officers were able to determine that an aggravated assault had occurred against the female. Fortunately, the child was not harmed. The victim and her child were treated at the scene and transported to Robert Wood Johnson University Hospital by our Highland Park First Aid Squad. The Middlesex County Prosecutor's Office was contacted because of the severity of the crime, and a joint investigation was immediately opened, headed by Detective Sean McGraw of the Highland Park Police Department and Detective Ally Bitterman of the Middlesex County Prosecutor's Office. The Middlesex County Prosecutor's Office and our police department committed its full resources to identify a suspect in this horrific crime, and many individuals worked pretty much nonstop to get this person off the street. I've been in this department over 30 years, and I've never seen such a collaborative efforts. No resources were spared. I personally met with Prosecutor Carey and his staff, and I was contacted several times a day by Chief McElair, who kept me updated on the progress of this investigation. So although we are recognized as the two lead investigators tonight, and deservedly so, this was indeed a team effort with many, many members of our Prosecutor's Office and our police department involved in this. And as a chief of police of this town, I can tell you, it's very comforting to know we have such able people in our department and at the county, resources when we need it. So I thank you very much, Middlesex County Prosecutor's Office. Through a thorough investigation and persistent detective work, an individual was identified and taken into custody within 48 hours of that crime for an unrelated offense. Through further investigation, the suspect was charged eight days later with 16 counts of criminal offenses and ordered held without bail on his case. The suspect, since incarceration, has pleaded guilty to the crimes in this incident and will be sentenced to 23 years in prison for his acts. Detective Bitterman and Detective McGraw was working on this case from the beginning right through the court proceedings. We appreciate your efforts very much, and we congratulate you, and the mayor would like to read a proclamation from the Borough of Highland Park to honor you. Mayor?
Councilwoman Foster-Dublin?
Councilwoman Foster-Dublin?
I don't think it works. I tried to get it.
You're going to be here and get home.
Whereas, on February 19th, 2017, officers of the Highland Park Police Department responded to a call for assistance on Harper Street, and whereas, on arrival at the scene, officers determined that there had been an aggravated sexual assault on a female victim resulting in serious injuries. And whereas, the victim and her child were transported to a local hospital for treatment of the serious injuries she had sustained. And whereas, members of the Highland Park Police Department and the Middlesex County Prosecutor's Office combined resources and immediately commenced an investigation led by Detective Sean McGraw and Detective Ally Bitterman. And whereas, a thorough and extensive investigation by Detective McGraw and Detective Bitterman produced a suspect for the crime. And whereas, a suspect was arrested and charged with multiple serious crimes and has been convicted of multiple serious crimes and is currently incarcerated. And whereas, the efforts of Detective McGraw and Detective Bitterman represents the best traditions of solid investigatory work, dogged persistence, and interdepartmental cooperation. Now, therefore, I, Gail Brill-Mittler, mayor of the Borough of Highland Park, do hereby issue the special commendation to the following police officer and investigator from the Middlesex County Prosecutor's Office for their roles in solving this horrific crime. Detective Sean McGraw, Detective Ally Bitterman. On behalf of the people of Highland Park, I offer them my heartfelt thanks for a job well done and keeping Highland Park safe.
Officer McGraw also received a departmental service pin for meritorious service from Councilwoman We thank you very much, Ally, Detective Bitterman, and Sean, Detective McGraw, for your efforts, and we appreciate your hard work in that case. Thank you very much. Last, but certainly not least, we had a call involving the delivery of a baby, and I'm going to call the captain of our First Aid Squad up, Naomi Hanuck, to give the details of that, and then we will present proclamations to those involved in that call. Captain?
The Highland Park First Aid Squad rarely delivers babies. Things happen though when you least expect it. On June 14th, 2017, just after 9:00 p.m., our squad received a call for a young female in active labor. We were all at our squad building, finishing up a meeting when the call came in, and so we were able to immediately respond. As the first crew entered the house, the patient was being assisted out of the bathroom by officers, and it was clear she was already in labor. Upon our arrival, it was clear that the circumstances surrounding her pregnancy made it a high-risk delivery, so we immediately requested paramedic assistance as well as more squad members. Officer Giles and one of our own members were able to get behind the patient and support her. At 9:12 p.m., the young mother delivered the baby. He was small, clearly very premature, and at first unresponsive and not breathing. By the time ALS arrived, squad members had revived the baby, and he was moving and started responding. Care was continued in collaboration with ALS to ensure that the baby had his best chance. At the same time, the second crew completed the delivery process and focused on the mother's needs. We transported the mother and baby separately due to the seriousness of the baby's condition. We performed CPR until we reached the hospital, where the baby's care was transferred to ER staff. The next evening, I was able to visit the new mother and her baby, who was currently recovering in a NICU. She told us that his first scan showed he is developing normally and without deficit. Born at 24 weeks, he is expected to make a full recovery. In general, I feel that we work very well together, both within our departments and with each other. Were it not for the exceptional way in which we supported each other this time, we may not have been able to save the life of this tiny boy. In order to recognize the efforts of our squad members, I would like to present each of you with two pins. A SOAR to represent the delivery of the baby, and a CPR pin to represent the life-saving measures which we took.
If I could call up the individuals, I believe we have 11 members of the squad, including Captain Hanuck, who was on the call that day. Josh Lowenstein, Shari Larson, Rachel Miller, Dove Lankin, Becky Lauer, Robin Lowenstein, Sam Lee, Dave Larson, Ezra Mann, and Ari Kurzner. And from our police department, Officer Garley, Officer Giles, and Officer Alara Jr. Sergeant Wenskowski is also involved in this, but he is on vacation and unable to be here tonight. So before we give out the pins, I will ask the mayor to read the proclamation, and she will give everyone a copy of one. So, mayor?
Whereas, on June 14th, 2017, at 9:08 p.m., officers received a call of a female in active labor. Officers responded immediately to the residents where the patient was discovered to be in the process of giving birth. And whereas, the officers immediately entered and began to aid and comfort her while preparing for the imminent delivery of her baby. And whereas, members of the Highland Park First Aid Squad were summoned and arrived within minutes to aid and assist with the delivery of the baby. And whereas, upon delivering the baby, it was discovered that the baby was premature, unresponsive, and not breathing. And whereas, members of the Highland Park First Aid Squad immediately performed CPR and other life-saving measures to save the newborn infant's life. And whereas, members of the Highland Park Police Department, working in conjunction with members of the Highland Park First Aid Squad and the RWJ Barnabas Paramedics, delivered a newborn infant and therefore, through their efforts, saved the life of the baby. And therefore, now therefore, I, Gail Brill-Mittler, mayor of the Borough of Highland Park, do hereby issue the special commendation to the following police officers and First Aid Squad members for their roles in delivering a newborn baby. Sergeant Derek Wenskowski, Officer Elena Giles, Naomi Hanuck, Shari Larson, Dove Lankin, Robin Lowenstein, Dave Larson, Ari Kurzner, Officer Sean Garley, Officer Joseph Alara Jr., Josh Lowenstein, Rachel Miller, Becky Lauer, Sam Lee, and Ezra Mann. On behalf of the people of Highland Park, I offer them all my heartfelt thanks for a job well done.
Councilwoman Foster-Dublin will present the police officers with a departmental Exceptional Duty Service Award pin, and Captain Hanuck, I will present her with her SOAR pin and her CPR SAVE pin, because she was on the call also, and she will present the same pins to the members of her staff. Once again, I want to thank everyone for coming out and supporting our first responders this evening and for the wonderful work they do, and I certainly am appreciative. It makes my job as chief a lot easier, and this is a happy night when we're able to do this. One last thing, there's going to be, when the mayor determines that we're going to have a break, there'll be cake, some refreshments. You're all welcome to join in. I always forget, and I just wanted to thank Kim Perkins-McGraw and Andrea Bay. They always arrange a nice festive cake out there and whatnot. Thank you. I'd like to publicly thank you for that. You're always there for us. We appreciate it. Thank you very much.
And at this point, let's all take a break and enjoy some of the refreshments. We'll meet back here in 15 minutes. Thank you.
That's one of the stories. I mean, you've got a lot of stories.
Okay, everyone, we're going to get back to regular business now. Okay, council reports.
One second. Housekeeping. You guys gave the vote on this sovereign resolutions.
Ah, thank you.
Sorry.
That's okay.
The chief gloss is over that. It's all right.
Okay.
Minister of Resolutions, to promote...
May have a motion to adopt the following stored items. Resolution to promote Sergeant Richard Adams Abrams to Lieutenant. Resolution to promote Police Officer John Satchow to Sergeant. Police Officer Jose Corbello to Sergeant. Motion, please.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Foster-Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hirsch?
Yes, and I would like to, I just want to say that the interview process was...
Yes, and I would like to, I just want to say that the interview process was just phenomenal. Thank you, Councilwoman Foster Dublin, Chief Risco. It was just very informative, and it was just a great process. Thank you.
Councilwoman Kim.
Yes.
Councilwoman Wolkowitz.
Yes.
All right, now let's go over our council reports. I'm going to start on the left there with Councilwoman Foster Dublin.
My report is going to be short. I think my report was extensive, because we just did our promotions just now. But I want to remind everyone that August 1st is our National Night Out. As usual, we're going to be downtown. Come out, support, have a good time, bring the kids, the family, friends, and have a great time at National Night Out. And also, as we're in the summer months, please remember to wear your bicycle helmets and be safe when you're traveling around town. Bicycle helmets is really important for all, because we want to make sure that everyone is safe in whatever they're doing. And of course, I'm going to talk about my, when you're crossing the street, put away the cellphone, look down, and pay attention as you proceed. Thank you. That's my report. Have a great summer.
Thank you, Councilwoman Foster Dublin. Moving down to the other end, Councilwoman Kim.
Thank you, Mayor. On Tuesday, June 20th, we held our 13th Annual Senior Citizens Prom Dancing Under the Stars. It was a night enjoyed by all who attended. Mary Cohen was named our 2017 Prom King, and Ann Glatt was crowned our 2017 Prom Queen. On June 2nd, our fireworks event was a huge success. We would like to thank our sponsors for helping to fund this wonderful community event. Summer camps are doing great. This week, Day Camp will be going to I Play America and Rutgers Gardens. Next week's basketball sports camp is full. You can still sign up for Day Camp and future weeks of sports camps. Upcoming sports camps are wrestling, football, soccer, tennis, and cheerleading. Today, at the Highland Park Senior Youth Center, we distributed $70, $25 vouchers to be used at our local farmer's markets for fresh fruits and vegetables. This program was funded by the U.S. Department of Agriculture, sponsored by New Jersey Department of Health and Senior Services, and coordinated by the Middlesex County Department on Aging and the Department of Community Services Office on Aging. Make sure to stop by the senior center or visit our website for a listing of special events happening this summer, including ice cream socials, trips to Atlantic City, Crystal Springs, and beach trips. On June 2nd, 5:00 PM to 9:00 PM, across from National Night Out, the Arts Commission will hold a chalk art festival. Join us to watch local artists create incredible chalk art pictures. We will have a special section for children to create their own artwork. Sponsorships and donations will benefit Middlesex County's Adult Substance Abuse Program. Middlesex County is holding a senior citizen art contest. Works will be on display at Middlesex County College Studio Art Gallery from July 17th through August 10th. First place winners then advance to the state competition. You can pick up more information at our Highland Park Senior Center. And that is it for my report.
Thank you. Councilwoman George?
Thank you, Mayor. Before my report, just like to say briefly, thank Councilwoman Kim. The Arts Council is working with the arts collective with regard to putting, working on the new website for the environmental center, so that all of them are pulling together to get nature shots in the area. The mayor and I attended along with Assemblywoman Nancy Pingan, Senator Pat Deignan, representatives from our DPW and from DOT regarding some infrastructure questions related to the distribution of Transportation Trust fund allocations. Highland Park was among the lower tier of the standard formulas this year, and we submitted up to seven roads for repair, targeting four that desperately need work and received enough funding to do one. But in that discussion came out of that some new ways of looking at financing some of the infrastructure, particularly roads, but also other items. And I had brought to the meeting some new programs, which the Department of Transportation actually sponsors. Senator Deignan in particular was very helpful. That looks like we'll be able to make some significant improvements to our submissions to the state, and hopefully they make some significant responses and come forward with real funding. DPW, I met with my weekly meeting this morning, early this morning. DPW wants you to know that we are going to be starting our paving program in conjunction also with PSE &amp; G, starting their paving program. The start will be with a lot of the sites that PSE &amp; G disturbed along South Fifth and other areas. Cleveland is targeted for some substantial and major work, however, that will be last because there are some additional road openings to be done, and our department would prefer that they be done rather than do the, have PSE &amp; G pave and then tear them up again. And that's going to be a curb-to-curb repair. Felton Avenue, sections of Felton will also be done. Graham between, at Crowell's Road, Grant, Second to Madison, and DOT financing will do North Second to North Third, Grant Avenue. So please bear with us. As they always say, temporary inconvenience, permanent improvement, but that work will be starting. The DPW has also completed the tree planting along Raritan and also in the infrastructure or interior areas, and I thank the DPW crews who worked. We were on a tight timeline because of the problems with the RFPs coming through and the stocks of trees to plant, but they still got it done in time to meet the planning schedule. There's a natural progression that has to be done. The Environmental Commission met July 5th at the Environmental Center. I'd like to thank volunteer Dan Larkins, who was a member of that committee. The commission, he also ran the birding projects, which have been turning very popular lately. He's accepted a position out of state, and we wish him very well. With regard to the solar field progress, the Environmental Commission was advised at the meeting that the Upper Freehold Soil Conservation District has granted the permit for soil disturbance at the Upper Meadows, clearing another roadblock, letting us move forward. The volunteers in the area have been working along with the Environmental Commission for the Lower Meadows Project, revamping the entrance, and that's in progress. Sustainable Highland Park met June 28th. They in particular are very much involved with the plastic bag reduction campaign, which is kicked off at the recent Friday afternoon farmer's market with a presentation. They'll also be screening the film Bag It very, excuse me, frequently, and using the trailer for that, which they can show without licensing problems, hopefully on HPTV. Also, and the movie's going to be presented in the schools as well. The Solar Challenge, which you've heard a lot about this year, is actually still open through September, although the challenge part is no longer, we're no longer in the running, because that part of the program has been resolved. However, the website is still up, and the participants will still come out and screen for solar installation and discuss that with you. Sustainable Highland Park also discussed the process for the next Silver Certification for Sustainable New Jersey, which not only rewards our community with sustainability across the board, but also allows us to qualify for certain grants as well, one of which was the Plastic Bag Awareness Program. And they're discussing early implementation of the recertification process with the liaisons through all the different departments, boards, and commissions. Finally, with regard to Sustainable Highland Park, the Racist Center conducted a natural healing presentation at the Environmental Center. It was actually over capacity with 33 people. There's been a lot of follow-up, which Nicole told me about the other day, and it was very well received, and hopefully they're going to be presenting it again. The next meeting is, I believe, on July 27th. Finally, with regard to the Shade Tree Advisory Committee, their next meeting is tomorrow night. I'll be there. The Shade Tree Inventory was updated with the planting and location list of the DPW trees, so that project should be almost complete at this time. We'll be looking for volunteers, and I'll be speaking more about that. Volunteers are needed with our native plant preserve. Volunteers are currently working very, very hard. Some of the trees in the plant preserve in the Lower Meadows are being challenged by invasive grapevines and wisteria, and they need some volunteers to help remove that. You can't just cut them, because the dead weight starts to overload the trees. It's probably number one cause of losing trees in a floodplain area is the excessive top weight. So we'll be speaking more about that. And finally, I was stopped by the native plant preserve the one weekend last, one evening last week. Mary Denver, one of our more dedicated volunteers, was there working. Of course, I had a full suit on if coming from work, and she called me over, "Take a look, take a look at four baby skunks that they found in the native plant preserve." I declined to hold them, having a suit on and going to another municipal meeting, but that just shows that the level, and I was very impressed, and I actually just stood there and looked at her for a moment. It was hot, it was 95 degrees. She'd been working all afternoon in the plant preserve and working on trying to save these four baby skunks that they found, and it really showed to me the dedication and the real rock-hard work, not just the skull work and the writing and the meetings, but the real rock-hard work, hard, dirty fingernails work that our volunteers do. I was very impressed. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilwoman Hirsch?
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we are, well, first I just have to say, you know, let me ad lib for a second, and I'm sorry, everybody, to see that full room before honoring our first responders and emergency responders, and just, you know, everything that, you know, happens when we're not looking and when we're just living our lives. It's just, every time we have these ceremonies, it's humbling, and it puts things in check, and just, you know, reminds us, you know, how lucky we are, just how lucky we are. So I just, I just wanted to say that. But tonight, we're holding the second and final reading of an ordinance that will establish an official commission on immigrant and refugee affairs. This body will serve as the cornerstone of the policies and initiatives that stem from our inclusive community resolution passed in May. I anticipate that our regular monthly meetings will begin in the fall, and I'm thrilled that the six members of our immigrant and refugee task force, who, Mayor, you appointed in December, have agreed to join the commission. We have three additional seats, so if you're interested in volunteering to ensure that Highland Park is a fair and welcoming community for immigrant neighbors and friends, please visit www.hpborough.com, click on the word volunteer in the left-hand sidebar, and click on the link that says volunteer general application. In related news, it was wonderful representing the Borough Council at the Interfaith Rise Celebration of World Refugee Day this past Sunday, July 9th. We have, you know, we're fortunate that we're strong in Highland Park, thanks to community leaders and the work of so many champions for immigrant and refugee rights and justice. I was proud to receive awards on behalf of Mayor Gail Brill-Mittler, Chief Stephen Risco, Officer Mohab Hanout, and for their work in fostering greater cross-cultural understanding in our town. I too received an award, which was very unexpected, and from which I'm very grateful. Our Human Relations Commission hosted the Borough's second pride flag raising on June 20th, as we honored LGBT Pride Month. We had about 40 people in attendance at the event, co-sponsored by the Pride Center of New Jersey. Thank you to the Pride Centers Nicole Brownstein and David Rogoff, who's also a member of the Human Relations Commission, for the remarks, and to everyone who believes that no matter if times are good or bad, fighting for a just society is a daily struggle and a moral imperative. Thank you to Freeholder Deputy Director Charles Tamaro, and Michael Spadoro, and Richard Green of the LGBT Caucus of the Middlesex County Democratic Organization for being pioneers on the county level. The Human Relations Commission will hold its next monthly meeting Wednesday, July 19th, 7:00 PM, here at Borough Hall on the first floor, 221 South Fifth Avenue. I should note that was the same night as the senior prom, so it was, that was, it was a festive and lively place to be. And I did get, I popped into the senior prom, that was so cool. Thank you to Council President Wolkowitz also for preserving the flag, being a steward of the flag, and for lighting the spark to get this, to get the second event going this year. Thank you. Our housing authority has been hard at work ensuring safe, decent, affordable housing conditions. I sound like a broken record here, but for our 124 public homes here in Highland Park, having recently partnered with the New Brunswick-based New Jersey Community Capital, a mission-based community development financial institution that will help with necessary capital improvements. I'm mentioning this because we just have some kind of pro forma business on the agenda tonight that continues to establish this partnership. We have a 40-year-old public housing facility that needs work, and we're not alone in the country. Nationwide, we have about $30 billion in unmet capital needs in our public housing stock. This alliance with New Jersey Community Capital will provide us with the necessary capital to continue our public stewardship and management of our public housing stock. The next Highland Park Housing Authority will take place tomorrow, July 12th, 2017, 6:30 PM, at the Samuel Cronman Building, 242 South Sixth Avenue. Happy to report that the Highland Park Conservative Temporal Congregation, Anche Emeth, has recently launched a social justice initiative, and as a component of this work, the temple will provide one volunteer each Thursday night distribution for the Highland Park Food Pantry. The first distribution for the food pantry this month is Thursday, July 13th, 5:00 PM, at the Highland Park Senior Youth Center at 220 South Sixth Avenue. Thanks to Congregation Anche Emeth, it's terrific, and, you know, I'd love to, you know, know even more about their outreach into the community, so it's exciting. And finally, I'm thrilled to report that the Highland Park Commission for Universal Access this week agreed to donate $500 to the Highland Park Police Department for National Night Out on August 2nd. As you know, Universal Access has a dedicated funding stream that is capitalized by way of handicapped parking enforcement. Thank you to Lieutenant Gary Pennacella, who represents the Department on Universal Access, Chief Risco, and to the entire Highland Park Police Department. And that's my report.
Thank you. Council President Wolkowitz?
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Councilwoman Hirsch. It was a pleasure to be a steward of the rainbow flag and to pass it on to, into your very capable hands. As you know, the flag was a gift to us last year from the Pride Center.
Yes. Yeah, and they were just wonderful to work with.
Yeah.
And...
Thanks for keeping on the tradition.
Well, thank you for getting it going.
Tonight, we will be voting on an ordinance to help the borough keep better tabs on vacant and abandoned properties. As you know, residences or buildings that become deteriorated or are vacant cause public health, safety, and nuisance problems, and they bring down property values of neighboring homes. Our intention is to create a registry at a cost to the owner to incentivize the owner to maintain and/or make necessary repairs. We believe this initiative will improve our quality of life. I have a couple more announcements. Thanks to our Main Street organization for all of their programs and events, they've started a new program called Ladies' Nights, coming this summer to downtown Highland Park. On Wednesday evenings in July and August, many Highland Park businesses are staying open late and participating in our First Ladies' Night Out events, an evening of exclusive promotions and discounts brought to you by the shops and restaurants of downtown Highland Park. Did you know that women account for 85% of all consumer purchases? Women make the decision in the purchases of 94% of home furnishings, 92% of vacations, 91% of homes, 60% of automobiles, 51% of consumer electronics. And because women serve as primary caregivers for children and the elderly, women buy on behalf of the people who live in their households, as well as for extended family and friends. Main Street has recognized this, and so far, the participating businesses, our Bridge Turkish and Mediterranean Grill, where ladies will receive 20% off on Wednesday evenings... evenings, Over the Moon Toys and Through the Moon Gate, July twenty-sixth and August twenty-third only, Link's Ape Computers will be offering ten percent off, Kinetics will be offering seven dollars for all classes. Let's sign up. Tay Tay's will have a two-for-one deal, Chamber Forty-Three will have fifteen percent off, and Pinos will be having four-dollar glasses of wine. I hope to see you all there.
Is there a limit on the number of glasses?
Upcoming at our popular outdoor movie theater on the municipal parking lot next to our Main Street office will be Time Bandits on July fifteenth and Do the Right Thing on July twenty-ninth, and that'll finish out the month of July, and we have a couple more offerings in August. And don't forget about our weekly farmer's market, every Friday, eleven to five-thirty, June through December. I'm particularly looking forward to our annual Tomato Festival on July twenty-eighth. And also calling all artists, vendors, and sponsors for our Arts in the Park. It's our twelfth Annual Arts in the Park Street Festival, which includes a juried art show and arts and crafts sale in downtown Highland Park on Sunday, September twenty-four, from eleven-thirty to four-thirty. Sign up to be an artist or vendor, sign up to play music or perform, or sponsor the arts, and you can find out more information at mainstreethp.org or on their Facebook page. And lastly, I just want to let you know that our Safe Walking and Cycling Committee, who are very engaged, very active, are planning on naming September Safe Walking and Cycling Month. And to honor that, or to celebrate that, they're going to have a few events. We're plan, we're trying to plan now on a, on a town bike ride, and also a bike rodeo for the kids and adults to be held later in the month, and we'll keep you posted as, as the plans progress. Thank you.
Thank you. Borough Administrator, do you have a report?
I do. A quick one, I hope. Thank you. Let me find my notes, then, see if I can switch. Quickly, I wanted to make sure everybody was aware, if you weren't already, we're in the midst of our summer hours. They started on July third and end on September first, which basically means Monday and Wednesday, the Borough Hall is open eight to five-thirty, Tuesdays eight to six, and Thursdays eight to four, and we're closed Friday, and also Saturday and Sunday, in case you didn't know that. I did want to let everybody know that we are poised to send out tax letters, but we're on hold pending some news from state, basically as part of the budget negotiations in Trenton. There were some tweaks made to state aid for schools, and so as we await, basically, final calculations so we can get approval on our final tax levy, we have to hold off on sending out those bills, which would normally be going out this week. What I will, there is any resolution at the end of the agenda that will be covering that, but essentially what that means is the deadline for payments will be extended to August thirty-first, so you'll, you'll get your bills as quickly as we can turn them around. And the last thing I'll mention is we do have a finance position opening. It's posted on our website, so I just, you know, take a look if that's your background and you have any interest.
Thank you. Borough Attorney, do you have a report?
No report, Madam Mayor.
Okay. I have a brief report. I want to also thank everyone who pulled together for our annual fourth, or second of July, Fourth of July celebration and fireworks. I think it's important for us to all remember what we are celebrating before we are watching the fireworks, and as I said that night, the best way to summarize what we are celebrating every Fourth of July is for me to reiterate the preamble of the Declaration of Independence, which was written in seventeen-seventy-six, and that is, "We hold these truths to be self-evident that all men, perens, and women, are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights, that among them are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness." This is something very important for us all to remember, especially in two thousand and seventeen. I want to thank Andrea Bay and Kim McGraw and their teams. Also want to thank the Police Department, the First Aid Squad, the Fire Department, our Public Works Department, and everyone else that came out to make sure everybody would be safe at this event. I also want to thank everyone who donated to the Highland Park Gives a Hoot Fund that evening. That fund, as you may recall, is dedicated to providing healthy lunches to our schoolchildren when school is not in session. Our volunteers were out, and many, many people made donations, and I want to thank them all. We raised, I think, four hundred dollars that night, so thank you all for, for contributing. Also want to pick up a little bit on something that Councilman George mentioned. In his report, he mentioned that PSENG would be repairing our streets curb-to-curb. I want you all to know that that was no easy feat. We, in the past, as you know, they would repair the streets with rectangles that would then go in, slump into the ground, and, and it was a major disturbance to all our residents. It took us several meetings, but we did get them to agree to pave curb-to-curb, and I'm really happy about that for all of us. On a not-as-happy note, you should be aware that the Transportation Trust Fund this year has only granted us two-hundred-and-sixty-two thousand dollars for road repairs in two thousand and eighteen. What that means, first of all, that's at least half and more of what we've received in the past. We used to receive more like four hundred to six hundred thousand dollars. What that means to us is that that two-hundred-and-sixty-two thousand dollars will only get us one Main Street repaired. And as Councilman George said, in meeting with some of our legislators today, we did get some good information for going forward on how to handle this sort of thing in the future. The last thing, I want to end on a good note. You may recall that about two or three years ago, Council President Welkowitz and I went down to visit the BPU. It was after first Sandy, and parts of our town were out of electricity for twelve days. When electricity came back on, we were, we had some light for a few days before there was a major fire in the Edison Substation, and again, Highland Park was dark. After that, Councilwoman Welkowitz and I did go down to Trenton to meet with the BPU and made a pitch to get a microgrid here in Highland Park so that at least our municipal buildings and emergency buildings could be kept lit and functional in a power outage. I'm happy to say that two to three years later, we just received a grant from the BPU for a hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars to conduct a feasibility study for a microgrid in the municipality. So never give up. All righty. Clerk, would you report on that? Oh, sorry.
Mayor, may I ask, is it, is it okay to ask a question for something that you mentioned in your?
Sure.
Just, just regarding the, the Transportation Trust Fund? Was there any indication that they were, because, because the formula is, is not skewed our way, is that right? Is that, is that the?
Well, I'm going to let Councilman George answer that question.
Putting on my day-to-day pays-the-mortgage hat, I walked in with about a hundred-and-fifty pages, including the statute and the formula on the first page, and the part that they forget to read, which is the discretionary portions that are mandatory for infrastructure improvements, but other than that. I then gave them the five grant programs that they have that they don't tell anybody about, which are walking and centers, safe access to centers, transportation, even putting aside the other programs that Council President Welkowitz has talked about. That seemed to soften up, Senator Diagnan was already on our side, but it seemed to soften up the audience and put a big smile on the mayor's face. So we had the good guy, Mayor, we had the bad guy, me, and, and I, I think that it helped. The problem is that the formula is slanted against us. The formula is based upon a calculation of county-to-state population, as shown by the census, and then county-over-state road miles for local, or local mileage. And when you look at Middlesex with the population factor, the grant factor, once the money is set aside for the fund, they apply that formula fairly unfairly for certain communities. It resulted in a significant decrease. When you put in the population numbers, Middlesex tends to come out fairly skewed in, in most of the calculations because of, we're very dense, but by being very dense, we're not like Vineland, you know, which, the Main Street is five miles long.
Right.
You know, or Corbin City, which has a population of twelve-hundred-and-fifty miles of road, just because it's out in, in, in the wilderness. So we, we tend to lose out on the formula, and the fund, we thought there would be a bump in the fund, at least to keep us where we were, because of the gasoline tax being put into place, and, and the first two quarters beginning, beginning to be funded on that, but it didn't work. Our normal grant is about four hundred thousand dollars, and this year, we got two-hundred-and-sixty-two thousand.
So even with the gas tax, we're, we're, we're getting a, we're getting a reduction by?
We took a significant reduction this year. Like, we took a forty-two percent reduction.
Right.
I mean, who, who are some of the towns that, what, what, what is the, who, who are the big, big winners in those?
So Matt, let's, let's take the discussion further into conference, if you want to delve further into it, because I'm, I'm a little concerned about the time.
Sorry.
It's okay. And Council President Welkowitz, did you have a question? Okay. Is there any public discussion? Please step up to the microphone and state your name and address.
Warren Ratliff, two-nineteen South Sixth Avenue. I have two questions I want to ask. One is, what is the ordinance in this town on fireworks?
Borough Attorney, do we have a fireworks ordinance?
Yeah, you can't have them. It's a state, it's a state law.
So it's a state law. When something is a state law, the state supersedes any municipal or local laws.
Okay, because the reason why I ask, I, I mean, I just wanted to ask because I know that there is some town, all towns in New Jersey, I know that they have ordinance against these, against these fireworks. That's why.
Are you talking about, like, the big fireworks that we put on with New Brunswick, or are you talking about, like, firecrackers and that's all?
Firecrackers, yes.
Oh, okay. Okay, so, so Borough Attorney, is that any different?
I don't believe we could look into it, but I, I think it's regulated. If you don't permit it in the town, the state law covers it, you don't, you're not allowed to do that. I know a lot of people do it, but you're not supposed to do it.
My question is, what is Highland Park's regulation on that?
I, I think we're...
Can I say something on that?
Okay.
Recently, the, the state of New Jersey, they, they lifted the ban on certain types of fireworks, the small ones that you can have. Before, there was a law that says that we, we cannot, private residents could not use fireworks. But this past Fourth of July, the law went into effect, and you could have the small ones. And if you've noticed, you've seen a lot of people around with those small fireworks that they, the, the small ones like this, that they've been setting on.
Okay.
But the, the big ones, like, I hear, like, boom in the middle of the night, that's not supposed to happen, but I don't know where that's coming from. But the small handheld ones, the, the state recently passed a law that people can have those.
Okay.
And if, and if at any time you're being disturbed by fire, firecrackers or anything like that, Chief, can someone call the? Okay, so you can always call the Police Department, and they'll come out and?
See, I have, I have a problem with that. See, when, when you call the police, and the police go, comes over and investigates, the police tell the people, well, so-and-so called the cops on you, and this and that.
Is that how it works, Chief? Chief, would you just explain how the process works, please?
We do not do that, because that would cause trouble.
Chief, can you please use the microphone, so those at home can hear you?
Yeah, first of all, Highland Park follows a state law on all fireworks that are prohibited by the state. I don't know if we do have an ordinance, I don't believe so, but we don't need one because we have state law. And it has been certain things like sparklers, I believe the governor just...
Sparklers and firecrackers.
If there's any issue in Highland Park, they call the police, and we will go, and if, usually, we give a warning, we may take the fireworks, confiscate them. If need be, we can go up to an arrest if we have to. We do not tell people who reported things, because that will cause trouble, so I don't believe that happens. I hope it doesn't. If it does, you can come and call us, okay?
Okay, because I, okay, and I have one other question. When are they going to build that, the center over there, direct center over there for the children?
I'm glad you brought that up, because that's on the discussion tonight when we come out of here. That's one of the things that we're going to be looking at as a council. So we, we'll have more information shortly. We, we do have some renderings that we're, that we will be reviewing, and I'll be sharing with the rest of the council where we are in the process. So as soon as we adjourn from this meeting, we're going into another meeting where we'll have another discussion on this.
Okay.
And I'll be sharing it with the council.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
You're quite welcome.
Any other public?
And just to be clear, that whenever someone does make a call to the Police Department, and the, and the police officer, an officer shows up at your house, they are not required to say who made that phone call. They don't have to say, um, it was John Brown that made that phone call, or, you know, request that an officer would come out and be present. So they, you don't have to give your name, the caller, and give information about yourself if you are going to report something to the Police Department.
Because the reason, I'm not trying to cut you off, the reason why that I have brought that up, because I have called the cops a couple times here, and they want to know what's my name, where do I live?
So, so as the chief said, if you have that situation, you can, like...
No, that's, that's, I, I think there's two different things. Chief, could you, could you get this microphone here and then speak to that? Thank you.
That's standard information. When someone calls the Police Department, we ask name, phone number, in case we get disconnected, we need to get back to them. Anyone is allowed to call and report something anonymously. If you're not comfortable giving your name or address, just say it's anonymous, and there'll still be a response, okay?
Okay. Okay, thank you. Any other public discussion? Seeing none, Clerk, would you report on advertising the vacant properties ordinance for consideration of passage on final reading by title?
Nordin submitting the code of the Borough of Highland Park, Chapter three oh three, by adding Article three requiring care and maintenance of foreclosed properties, and Article four authorizing the demolition of hazardous structures and regulation of vacant or abandoned properties, was duly advertised for consideration of passage on final reading by title, an affidavit of publications are filed. The ordinance was posted and made available for public inspection as required by law.
May I have a motion to take up the ordinance on final reading by title?
So moved.
As amended.
Read your agenda. You have to, you have to use the new one.
Okay, because this was amended since the last reading, may I have a motion to amend the ordinance?
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay.
I would just note for the record, for the public, that the amendments were made were simply some grammatical corrections and some clarifications in some sections that have needed to be put into the other sections, and nothing substantial that changed anything that was published was, was amended.
So we have a motion and a second?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Now a motion. Just follow the agenda.
Now, may I have a motion to take up the amended ordinance on final reading by title?
So moved. Second.
Public hearing. Seeing none. May I have a motion to adopt or reject the resolution to advertise the ordinance on final reading by title?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin.
Yes.
Councilman George.
Yes.
Councilman Hirsch.
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim.
Yes.
Councilwoman Welkowitz.
Yes.
Now you can go back to your other agenda. That's what happens when we change this.
Okay. Clerk, could you please report on advertising the lease ordinance for the capital equipment and improvement and financing program of the MCIA for consideration of passage on final reading by title?
An ordinance of the Borough of Highland Park, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, approving and authorizing the entering into execution and delivery of a lease in agreement with the MCIA relating to the issuance of county guaranteed bonds, was duly advertised for consideration of passage on final reading by title and affidavits publication are filed. The ordinance was posted and made available for public inspection as required by law.
And this, before the motion, this ordinance is for the purchase of police cars?
Lease of police cars and purchase of public works equipment, garbage truck, and a small utility vehicle.
Okay, thank you. May I have a motion to take up the ordinance on final reading by title?
Motion.
Second.
Any public hearing? None. Resolution to adopt or reject and advertise the ordinance on final reading by title?
So moved.
Roll call, please. Councilwoman Foster Dublin.
Yes.
Councilman George.
Just a note for the public, that these are paid for long-term bonding and not general revenues. And the small vehicle that the Borough Administrator just mentioned, I believe is a small commercially-available ATV-type vehicle that we've talked about before. It actually adds a significant amount of ability for us to access areas that are not accessible right now, allows us to complete the obligations that we have in our agreement with New Brunswick to clear the bridge. In my meeting this morning, our superintendent at DPW indicated it was taking four men, well over two hours, to clear our side of the bridge, and 25 bags of salt that goes right into the Raritan when it melts. This machine can accomplish it in two passes in 15 minutes with one man. It's a significant hourly savings. We save those man-hours and put them to good use elsewhere or not have to expend them at all. I vote yes.
Councilwoman Kim?
Yes.
Councilwoman Welkowitz?
Yes.
I don't think I voted.
Who would call?
Councilman Hirsch, while we started talking, I...
Well, I have an opinion about this one.
Is that a yes?
Yes.
She didn't write me.
Guys throw me off with all your comments.
Clerk, could you please report on advertising a loan ordinance for the capital equipment and improvement and financing program of the MCIA for consideration of passage on final reading by title?
An ordinance of the Borough of Highland Park, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, approving and authorizing the entry into execution, delivery of a loan agreement with the MCIA for various capital improvements and the acquisition and installation of various equipment, was duly advertised for consideration of passage on final reading by title and affidavits publication are filed. The ordinance was posted and made available for public inspection as required by law. And the supplemental debt statement filed in the Clerk's office by the Finance Department prior to introduction was received by the Division of Local Government Services.
Okay, may I have a motion to take up the ordinance on final reading by title?
So moved.
I'll second.
Any public hearing? Okay, may I have a motion to adopt or reject the resolution and advertise the ordinance on final reading by title?
Motion to adopt.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin.
Yes.
Councilman George.
Yes.
Councilman Hirsch.
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim.
Yes.
Councilwoman Welkowitz.
Yes.
Okay. Clerk, could you please report on advertising the traffic ordinance amendment for consideration of passage on final reading by title?
An ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the Borough of Highland Park, Chapter 7, traffic was duly advertised for consideration of passage on final reading by title and affidavits of publication are filed. The ordinance was posted and made available for public inspection as required by law.
And just so everyone knows, this is the ordinance to change the traffic pattern on Hilton and Woodbridge with the opening of a new Chinese cultural center and school. May I have a motion to take up the ordinance on final reading by title?
So moved.
Second.
Any public hearing? Okay, resolution to adopt or reject and advertise the ordinance on final reading by title? Motion?
Motion to adopt.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin.
Yes.
Councilman George.
Yes.
Councilman Hirsch.
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim.
Yes.
Councilwoman Welkowitz.
I'd just like to thank our police department, the public safety team, and our zoning board for creating this arrangement based about the travel plan for the school and the children that will be attending. So thank you very much, and I vote yes.
Clerk, could you please report on advertising the ordinance creating the Commission on Immigrant and Refugee Affairs for consideration of passage on final reading by title?
An ordinance submitting the code of the Borough of Highland Park, Chapter 9, Boards, Committees, and Commissions, creating a commission on immigrant and refugee affairs, was duly advertised for consideration of passage on final reading by title and affidavits of publication are filed. The ordinance was posted and made available for public inspection as required by law.
May I have a motion to take up the ordinance on final reading by title?
So moved.
Second.
Any public hearing? Seeing none, resolution to adopt or reject and advertise the ordinance on final reading by title?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin.
Yes.
Councilman George.
Yes.
Councilman Hirsch.
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim.
Yes.
Councilwoman Welkowitz.
Yes.
Clerk, could you please report on introduction of Safe Walking and Cycling Committee Ordinance Amendment for consideration of passage on first reading by title?
An ordinance submitting the revised general ordinances of the Borough of Highland Park, Chapter 2-43, Safe Walking and Cycling Committee, has been introduced in writing by the Economic Development and Planning Committee for consideration of passage on first reading by title.
May I have a motion to adopt or reject and advertise ordinance on first reading by title? No.
So moved.
Roll call.
Oh, roll call. I say that. Our roll call.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin.
Yes.
Councilman George.
Yes.
Councilman Hirsch.
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim.
Yes.
Councilwoman Welkowitz.
Yes. May I have a motion to adopt the following starred items? Do I just say the numbers, 17? Numbers 17 through 29?
No.
No, 17 through 28. Thank you. May I have a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin.
Yes.
Councilman George.
Yes.
Councilman Hirsch.
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim.
Yes.
Councilwoman Welkowitz.
Yes. Mayor Brill-Mittler appoints the following, Metzley, Rosio-Herzog, to the Arts Commission. May I have a motion to confirm?
Motion.
Second. Roll call.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin.
Yes.
Councilman George.
Yes.
Councilman Hirsch.
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim.
Yes. I would just like to say we still have openings on the Art Commission. We are meeting this Thursday here at Borough Hall, 6:00 PM. Please join us.
Councilwoman Welkowitz.
Yes. And then we have some open items.
Do I read that off? Clerk reports introduction of acquisition of property ordinance, Raritan Avenue, for consideration of passage on first reading by title. May I have a motion to adopt or reject?
I have to read.
Oh, you have to read it first. Sorry.
An ordinance pursuant to NJSA 4812-3 by the Borough of Highland Park, authorizing the acquisition of 212 Raritan Avenue, Block 22, Lot 4, for a sum not to exceed $420,000. Said acquisition being made as part of the Borough Square redevelopment project, has been introduced in writing by the Economic Development and Planning Committee for consideration of passage on first reading by title.
May I have a motion to adopt or reject and advertise ordinance on first reading by title?
So moved.
Enthusiastically second.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin.
Yes.
Councilman George.
Yes.
Councilman Hirsch.
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim.
Yes.
Councilwoman Welkowitz.
Enthusiastically, yes. Resolution to extend due date for third quarter tax payment? I have a motion to adopt or reject?
Motion.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin.
Yes.
Councilman George.
Yes.
Councilman Hirsch.
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim.
Yes.
Councilwoman Welkowitz.
Yes.
Ms. Bigheart, 307 Magnolia, have a long shopping list. You have somewhere an ordinance regarding bicycling off the sidewalks?
Yes, it does. Yes.
How are you going to enforce that?
Chief, would you like to answer that?
We'll do the best we can, Ms. Bigheart.
Well, unfortunately, it doesn't work very well. Now, the kids, at summer vacation, kids are riding them, and I walk with my dog, and I have to get off the sidewalk in order to accommodate the cyclists.
So Ms. Bigheart, as you saw earlier, we formed our new Safe Walking and Cycling Committee, and this is exactly the topics that we're discussing. So I mentioned earlier that we want to declare September as our Safe Walking and Cycling Month. We're looking to do a bike rodeo to educate the students and also adults for the rules of the road, because a lot of people just don't know it. I see adults that ride on the wrong side of the road. We also wanted to have an in-town bike ride by closing off some streets, and that is, would be, one of the ideas that we have for celebrating that is to create a temporary bike lane on South First Avenue. And we hope to have an open bike ride on September 10th, and we're just finalizing these dates. And there's another plan that we have, too. The committee is planning on applying to the New Jersey Department of Transportation for technical support, to come to our town, and it's not, they don't fund us, but they bring their experts down, and they could give us advice on how to create a bike lane network. Because as you know, that we're getting the bike share with Rutgers as early as next spring, so we are going to have a lot more cyclists in town. So those are things that we are looking at very carefully.
The streets are too narrow, and we have too many cars. Paving, you said something about there's going to be a limited amount of street paving because of the high cost?
Oh, so we do, you know, we do our fill-in regularly every year. The main big road improvements that we do, the funding for that comes from the state through the Transportation Trust Fund. And so because there was a significant cutback, instead of doing, being able to do the three roads that we wanted to in 2018, we are going to be able to do one road. However, after our meeting today with some of the legislators and talking about the DOT, our understanding is, and Councilman George is going to follow up on this, but our understanding is that there are some discretionary funds that we can look to apply for so that we might be able to get them for the additional roads.
Please put Magnolia and Third Avenue on that list. It's nothing but block, 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 the whole crosswalk. They repaved the street up to, or from Magnolia down towards the park, and from Raritan to Magnolia, and in between. I can't cross there.
Okay, Councilman George, would you address that with DPW?
I certainly will, Mayor. I can tell you, Ms. Bigheart, that we have a prioritized list that we try to keep up every year and work through. It's just that some roads get attention because of other reasons, not just because, oh, they have a lot of potholes. There are other roads that may be suffering from underground utility installations that are sagging, and the road paving is not just running the machine over it. The roads that are done through the Transportation Trust Fund are actually milled and re-prepared, so there's a lot more involved. And about 10% to 20% of that is the soft cost of the engineering and the permits that go into that. But we do maintain a priority list. We're working through that priority list at the present time, so the roads I mentioned are on the list, but I got to tell you that some of them have been on that priority list for over five years.
Speak to the chief. Two of his officers wouldn't allow me to cross. One time, they were doing work, power work on poles, and I was coming, and he said, stay there, don't cross. He had to come over, and he had to walk me. He said, it's not safe for you to walk alone.
So that's a good thing.
Another problem is, the Borough wants people to have trees on their sidewalks. I don't, because I don't want the leaves, and I don't want the branches, and I don't want the cores for the lifted sidewalks. They're all over the place. It's not safe for people to walk. The other thing is, you have an ordinance about fencing. Hedges are fences, if they are on your property. People don't trim them back. If you have a 42-inch or what is it, 48-inch sidewalk, and 2/3 of it is covered from the branches, from the thing, and people don't bother to cut it up, you can't walk through there.
Right. Ms. Bigheart, if you let us know where this area is, then Code Enforcement can go out there.
I'll be glad to get it to you.
Ms. Bigheart, I can tell you where that is. It's right near your house where I saw you the other day, where we were. It's on the Raritan Avenue side of Banner, of a Magnolia, between Third and Second. The hedge takes up 2/3 of the sidewalk.
That's right.
And we were walking, fortunately, you were on the other side. I was going to ask you to move over there because you can't walk on that sidewalk at all.
Right.
And there's loads of those.
So between the two of you, I hope you can get that message to Code Enforcement.
Ms. Bigheart, I'll talk to Scott tomorrow.
The other thing that I wanted, you were talking something about road repairs. There are trucks on Raritan Avenue that are wider than houses in length. They're not delivering anything on Raritan Avenue. Why do they have to drive through? We can't stand them.
It's a state highway.
No, it's a state highway. I'm not happy about that either.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, any other public discussion? Seeing none, may I have a motion to adjourn to conference meeting?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you.